They got basically shot down because of the high-rise structure of the building.
Okay, there being a quorum, I'll call me to order. Our recording secretary is recording the meeting, and Mr. Canton's recording the meeting. Anyone else wish to? There being none. It's on intention to go to executive session later in the meeting. In accordance with Master Home Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section, Subsections twenty-one A, under Section two, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations to eliminate personnel specifically to discuss and negotiate the town administrator's employment agreement. This is an open meeting made of indefinite effective evidence, confided in position. After that, we will return to regular open session. So.
After that, we'll go home.
No.
We'll go home and go to death.
Okay.
Only with the proper motion.
Speaking of town hall, I just stopped in the cutting room to get my haircut and was informed of how many selectmen had already been there.
She does a town hall, I'm gonna.
She tells me who's.
She does us all.
And she says, when Boyd comes in, you tell him he needs to have an appointment. He can't just drop in. Tell him I have a phone number. He's gonna come in and give me that look. We will talk about the composite time it takes for our haircuts.
Well, the good part is it doesn't take her very long to give me a haircut.
Did you tell her if you guys were ever in there at the same time? That there could be no discussion of town business?
Open haircut. So, we're gonna try to talk about the signed bylaw and regulations. How would folks like to proceed?
Well, I would, I can start by talking about it a little bit 'cause I've been involved in it for the last two or three weeks or a month or so. And I've been working on a particular sign at a particular place. And it violates several parts of the signed bylaw. Signed bylaw, and I'm talking about the Cumberland Farm Store and that abandoned sign that with the bare framework. I've been in and talked to them about the fact that we'd like that thing to disappear. And he indicated, and I think they're two brothers that own it. One of the brothers is the guy that really is in the store most of the time. You can't pronounce his name, but he calls himself Max. He said, we're interested in maintaining the looks of downtown Topsfield and we'd like to do something along that line. And I went in and talked to him a little bit later and they hadn't addressed the issue yet. And that's two or three weeks ago. And I'm about ready to go back, but I was waiting to have this meeting because I wanted to talk about some of the issues that that sign has 'cause it, in my opinion, is abandoned. And it specifically addresses abandoned signs in the bylaw. It addresses the fact that the sign can't be higher than the top of the building. And that's in the bylaw and it does exceed that. At the time that I was there, the first time, he said they, there's a big tree right out in front of that building. And it's leafed out and expanded enough that it covers up most of the front of their building. And they don't like that. They're convinced that the customers can't see their business and they think it's hurting their business. So they wanna get rid of that tree. And I thought that tree might be on the highway, on the street right away. So I went to Dave Bond and it's very close. It's right on the, it's on private property, but it's very close to being on the right away. I was hoping that it was gonna be on the right away and if we could agree that Dave Bond would get rid of the tree, I could, I could trade that for getting rid of the sign. But I can't do that anything. But anyway, I'm working on that and how I proceed with you guys' approval, how I proceed with someone, what we're talking about today. Just for your own information, by the way, I went to Tula and I said, "Give me a list of all the businesses in town." Twenty-hundred-and-seventy-seven of them. Many of them are obviously in people's homes, so they don't really affect us in the signed bylaw. But there's eleven pages like that. There's a lot more of in town than I thought there were.
So I, this is what I think brought this agenda to the meeting. I think various selectmen have been giving comments, lack of a word, about our enforcement of the signed bylaw.
No question.
And whether we do and why we do and that type of thing. To me, it hasn't happened in this order recently, talking about enforcement and that type of thing. If we're, I've said this before, to me, if we're gonna really get into the signed bylaw, there's a first step, which is for someone or some combination of ones to review the bylaw in light of a two thousand and eighteen perspective. That's generally what we do in issues of bylaws. And maybe it's perfect, but you know, to kind of redline it or yellow, highlight it about sections that maybe these don't still work or about things that could be put in and that type of thing. So again, I'm not saying I ask them to proceed further in conversation, but I wasn't sure of the reaction when I said that, but I thought, I don't, I don't think it would be the proper way to go other than to not do that at the same time for a moment. So putting that aside though for a moment, maybe it'll be helpful if you.
That's, that's what we really want.
Yeah, just tell us, what you enforce, what are you doing to enforce? How you enforce, what are you impacting?
So.
In part, I think what you see as the issues, because you are aware that people have, and the selectmen have been involved with this for some time. We have any number of emails, phone calls, whatever, from citizens saying they've got an issue with the fact that we don't seem to enforce our signs. So your input on that, it's appreciated.
Okay, and that's part of the problem is that if I don't see them, then I don't have the time to drive around town and say, oh, there's a violation over there and oh, there's a violation over there. Other than, and I've always treated zoning like this and obviously the signed bylaw is part of zoning. Unless it's a safety issue, Mass. General Law forty-eight requires the complaint to be in writing. So unless I get a complaint in writing, and if I do, I have fourteen days to respond to it. Either I, either I, I, you know, agree with them or I disagree with them, but I'd have fourteen days to act on it. And then it can, you know, then it can be, it can be appealed just automatically. Part of the problem with, with this is that there have been so many signed bylaw changes over the years that, and as you may know or not know, once you change the zoning bylaw, anything is there as grandfathered. It doesn't, obviously doesn't, obviously doesn't.
It's what we chose to implement it, by the way, was to grandfather it back then. Okay.
So.
That's not to say that.
It doesn't, it doesn't apply to these new little signs that are popping up all over the place where, you know, Doug's lawn mowing service or Doug's signs or whatever. Obviously doesn't apply to those. Wouldn't apply to little temporary signs that, you know, people put out for painting and that type of thing.
Because those are specifically in the bylaw that allows a contractor who's doing work at a particular place to.
But they may be covered by the.
It's a temporary sign, it's given while the work is going on.
And honestly, I haven't, I haven't seen the newest bylaw with, as far as how, what the duration that you can have here, allowed to have a temporary sign out. It used to be very, very limited. The sandwich board sign used to be limited. I think now, if I'm not mistaken, the, it says that they can be out during the, as long as the business is open. If I'm not mistaken, but it could be.
Yeah, I don't think we changed any of this.
We changed, this is a meeting, we made a change in opening the center.
Yeah, but we didn't change the time limit or about.
Is this, is this up to date, including the last meeting?
Yes.
So, but who, you know, I mean, you have to, it's obvious that the people are not going to police themselves with it. So when somebody has, who monitors the sign? Who monitors how long the sign is out there? You put a time limit on it, but.
Who counts?
Who's gonna, who's gonna keep track of that?
Well, that's part of the problem.
So, I mean, my opinion, a better way to do that is say, okay, you can put the sandwich board sign. Either eliminate them, if you allow them as a temporary sign, then say they can be out there during the hours of operation. Other than that, they need to be, they need to be out. They shouldn't be put on sidewalks. Makes me crazy when they, somebody put a sandwich board sign out like they do in Georgetown and they, and they put them right at the top of the handicap ramp going up on the sidewalk. Okay, makes me nuts. So I think this, there's probably some, some things that need to be dealt with like that in here. The, or maybe should be. Suggestion from me, you know, they, it's the planning board that has to decide whether they wanna do something like that or they wanna make those adjustments in it.
Well, rather than, rather than trying to say, you know, we're gonna make adjustments to this or that, we appreciate your input as to what are some of the issues. How we deal with them is another issue, is another issue. But for example, one of the things that I catch is that whenever we put something in a bylaw that relates to duration, you can do it for this long or this long or this long. Now we're talking about signage, that that becomes a problem because how do you document what that is and catch it? Okay, so that, I catch that as an issue.
Right.
We may find a way around that. We may change the bylaw, but we may also find a way to, okay, that's duration and here's how we handle duration signs. Somebody takes a picture, one, two, three, four, five, you get up to fifteen days. Oops, wait a minute, we got a problem.
Okay, but then.
Whatever, we'll come up with how to do it. What are the issues though? Duration is one, what else?
Another one that if I get extracted, it says whether or not something has been grandfathered. So you.
Oh, grandfathered, sure.
But you don't know if it's okay.
A temporary sign should never be granted.
No, 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 I was changing it, I was.
So as I say, every time, every time something gets, gets put out there, every day they put it out there. They take it and they put it out there again.
So even if we, and I'm not saying we have a, we had a full-time person who was a society person and they drove around and they could maybe see what was violated, but they wouldn't know just from observation whether it had been there since nineteen twenty-three and that was okay.
I was at a seminar today in, at the Andover and I was talking to the building inspector from Jack Roberto from Wakefield in Linfield. And he said that they had a sign person that was, they brought in specifically twenty hours a week to do signs, lasted a year. It was a disaster.
And can you, did he tell you, how was it a disaster?
Yeah. It just didn't, it just didn't work because he didn't have the authority to do anything. So we could get somebody to, you know, that could be the person that's designated to go downtown and look at all the signs. He could be the, the.
Sign.
Yeah, the sign, sign, sign police, so to speak. But it's under the zoning bylaw and it's only one person in town that has the authority to enforce the bylaw. And that's me.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Do, do, in terms of, you know, you've said that any complaint's gotta be in writing.
That's what, that's what the law says.
I understand that, okay.
To take action, anybody can put a complaint in.
I understand, but let me, but that's what he said and that's the law, okay? My personal opinion is that a lot of citizens are reluctant to do that. They'd rather write a nasty letter to the board of selectmen and say the sign, the sign bylaw is out of control here. My friends and.
And maybe we could take that up at a different meeting.
Okay, now, yeah, now.
That is a whole separate meeting itself.
Is it appropriate for the board of selectmen to fill out one of those complaint letters about a violation of the signed bylaw?
Yeah, you can, you certainly, you certainly could complain. You certainly could complain, but I think that's circumventing the process and that's just my opinion. It's circumventing the process and it's letting people, one of the reasons that that is a requirement in the law is that you have people that just wanna beat up on their neighbors. So they use, they, they think they're gonna use the zoning bylaws, they're gonna use the building inspector to go out there and harass their neighbors in some way, shape or form. All right, so.
Well, yeah, but I would, you know, if they.
If you guys are comfortable, if you guys are comfortable putting your name on it and you want to deal with the ramifications of that, then yes, it's a legitimate way.
I mean, we could agree, we could agree that one of us fill out a violation and give it to him and say, go check this thing out.
But it does have to be specific. So you're saying to, I said, this particular sign is a violation because of these reasons. Yeah, okay.
Now, what I'm saying, that, that helps because now all of a sudden you got five people driving around town and if they see something, we can fill out a complaint if we agree to do that.
And, and the other, the flip side of that, what you need to understand is that that complaint is public record. So when the people wanna know who complained about it, who complained about the, you know, when the, when the restaurant down there wants to know who complained about their, their little signs out front, the board of selectmen go talk to them.
Yeah.
So are there any requirements on the rights, like do you have a form?
There is a form.
There is a form.
There's a form on that website, yes.
Oh, there is a form, no question.
And it requires a signature, identification.
Would, would, I'm just asking a question of the board of selectmen at the moment. Would the board of selectmen be comfortable filling out a complaint like that and signing it, board of selectmen?
Yeah, I'm more comfortable with what, what I'm always.
Rather than an individual.
Yeah, that's what I'm always, just personally uncomfortable with. Not that we each don't have rights as residents or what else in front of me to formally waive it, but I think it's hard if one of us takes unilateral action like that. I'd rather have it discussed at a meeting.
Well, my, my idea would be is that if I saw a sign that I didn't, that I didn't, that I felt violated the bylaw, I would discuss it as a group here with the board of selectmen. We would agree that we submit it or we don't.
Yeah.
And if we agree to submit it, we would sign it, board of selectmen.
Okay, I'm totally comfortable with that. Could, can I, I'm not talking about, could we do a, if, if that occurred, if I'm not official, could we have on these three signs or some, I'm not talking about the same hundred.
Sure, sure. Very quick, and I think that's the most important thing. Since there's a number of signs that are apparently non-compliant that we would put together a list of, now the problem would be somebody says, that's all. Well, maybe we've missed some, but to put through a group of them rather than to say, we're picking on this one, this one, this one.
Well, we can concentrate on an area if nothing else.
That's even better, that's a better idea.
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
I also think it's important that if we start doing that, we kind of be consistent trying to clean up everything, not kind of do a couple of big ones and then stop. Because I think that is isolating people, commit to a process.
I have a suggestion on how, I mean, I would, I would like to see it and get the, get an initial cleanup done and then enforcement becomes easier when it's, it becomes clearer which signs are new and which ones, you know, which ones are old, which ones are new, which ones are, you know, you know. So, and to that end, I, I personally think would be a way to start, a good way to start, would be a letter that along the lines of the board of selectmen in conjunction with the town administrator and the building inspector are making a concerted effort to clean up the signage in the downtown area specifically. And if you wanna put that in however you wanna work, or townwide or however you wanna do it. Maybe townwide is a better.
Townwide might be a better choice because now it doesn't look like we're spot on.
Right, then we're not getting into specific, specific places. We can send that, we can send that letter to, you know, give them a time period to, you know, so within the next thirty days, you know, here is a copy of the signed bylaw. You know, they should be able to read the signed bylaw. If they can't figure it out, we can put language in there that they can call. You know, I can go out and take a look at it. But I think that if it comes from the, and maybe a notice on the website, on the front page of the website, but to start it in a kinder, gentler way would be to send a letter but from, so it's not just from the building inspector trying to be the bad guy or flex his muscles. It's a, people, people know that it's a concerted effort.
It's a town issue.
It's a group effort that everybody, everybody is behind from, you know, from the building inspector, the town administrator and the, and the board of selectmen. I mean, Kelly and I have been downtown, we've walked downtown, we've looked at the signs, we've listed the signs, taken pictures of the signs.
I've texted you signs, I got a complaint about this sign. Can you look at it and tell me why?
Right.
I mean, one of them was on the side of a building and it was huge and I thought, there's no way that can be conforming. And then you said, well, it's on Route one. It can be ten times bigger than it already is. And I, and so I just had to text the person back and say, "Told you blessings, it's only one tenth the size."
I can't imagine where that great big sign is.
So I have a question about that. I know there are a lot of grandfathered ones and that is kind of the issue. The signed bylaws don't, there isn't one set for Route one and one set for elsewhere. We do not have a sign overlay zone, sign bylaw overlay zone for Route one, do we?
No, you do not, but you have.
You have business highway.
Outer residentially have.
The zoning district.
Outer residential business.
And their requirements are different.
They vary.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
They're a by district.
For a good reason, obviously.
It's a church.
It's a different nature.
I mean, we could, you know, we could just send them to the businesses and, you know, to start with. I'm not, I don't see too many residential issues. But, you know, so any of those, that list, that, you know, Main Street, Hable Road's got one that makes me crazy. And I just, to be, to be perfectly honest with you, the signage hasn't been a big priority with me. We're so stinking busy down there all the time that it hasn't been, it hasn't been a huge thing.
But with support from the board of selectmen and when you have, we put together a plan, then you're in a better position to, to deal with.
Yeah, and there's several ways to do that. I mean, I, my, my personal opinion is that, that's the best way to start. Another way to start is I can just draft a citation and start sending out citations, a warning and then the twenty-five dollar fine, the first time, the fifth, the next time.
Where does it specify, that was my next question, is that once we issue a violation, they've got a certain amount of time to clean it up. And if they don't do that, where does it say that we can fine them?
Under the zoning bylaw, under the main part of the zoning bylaw.
Okay, all right. So we do have the ability to enforce them?
Oh, yeah, we did, we did. And that's what, it's, it's no different than enforcing that Dougie daycare kennel thing. So.
And it has been used. And in one case, the person came back and did an application to the board of selectmen for a special permit. There was a violation, special permit. So these things will vary how they're actually handled, but we've had people who have been told they're, they're cited, have been cited and knew that they were gonna be paying a fine if they didn't do something. And their, their response wasn't to fix the sign. First, it was come to the board of selectmen, request leniency to approve, not means to do approve.
Make a view.
And not perform something, which we then are in a position to approve or not approve.
Correct.
Is there a list of sign permits, including those that are grandfathered that were approved as oversized, internally lit, whatever? Do we have any kind of a record of that?
I don't. We, we have, we have records of them if they pulled a building permit for them. All right, but I would have to have a location and I would be able to find them.
But if we have a location, let's say we can't put twenty locations and I'd like to determine whether or not this just got thrown up or for instance, hysteria pizza, I believe, is bigger than the standard sign. And I don't recall, since I've been on here, they've come and they asked for ability to put in a used car place there and to get a liquor license, but they never came in for their sign.
Right.
That may be different than Topsfield Fair, which may have come and gone a permit. We can kind of know where we are.
So, so the public record would be the board of selectmen meetings where that got approved? And I specifically remember that was.
I think so, too.
One that was approved, it had to be approved.
hysteria pizza was approved as.
It was early on in the process.
Because I made, I, I, I was gonna say, I'm pretty sure I made him go for a special permit because.
Well, then I, I may not have been aware of that and I apologize on that. I'm just concerned that.
I get the concept, I, I.
Yeah, I know what we really, this is what we need, a relational database so that we can call out these things and kind of do research on that because we all know that's tough. I look at Signature Auto Cars, I mean, I know a lot of people in town that buy cars from them, but they've got not only lights on all night, but they've got signs in the window that are neon and all this kind of stuff. And there are other places that are doing that too and we've, I can't imagine those things are grandfathered. My concern is that there are sort of four different kinds of signs as I see it. One, what I call the dandelions, these little things, they stick in the ground along the edge of the road and I have some questions about that when the time's right. Another is things like the sandwich boards and sort of the regularly out there kinds. And I think you've started to suggest some ideas on that. Another of the signs that are what I would call removable but permanent. So it's things like the open sign of the window, which I think those are allowed even though they have LED lights on them and so on. But the signs that are hanging that can be moved.
As of the town meeting in May.
Yes, and then the, the third are the ones that are kind of the permanent ones, usually fixed outside the building or on the face of it. I'm less concerned about those 'cause I don't think those are the ones that bother people the most. It's, the first thing that everybody mentions to me are what I call the dandelions, the ones all along the street, is now the time to ask a question about that?
Sure.
If those are placed, and they're often in residential areas and they are on land that is town or publicly owned, such as the side of Route ninety-seven or places where we can be sure that it is town land. And I think of the, you know, the school open houses, I think of the college pro painters, I think of all that stuff. Is there, are we allowed, even though they were privately owned, signed, equipped without permits on public property, can we just pick them up and basically say, if you don't find your sign where you left it, it's gonna be at the DPW in every six months, we're gonna throw it in the water?
I think that you can do that, under the bylaw, I think you can do that. You have to have somebody that would do that. You have to have somebody that, that person has to be somebody that is responsible enough to not be taking signs off from private property.
I think you have to be careful and have.
And you don't know where, just because the street, just because the street is here, all right, it's not always ten feet, people think that it's ten feet off the edge of the street or twenty feet off the edge of the street. That's not always the way it is 'cause you have a sixty-foot right away, you have a twenty-foot wide street and that street can be anywhere in that right away.
No, I realize.
And somebody can be mowing town property and you don't know it.
But I see them outside telephone poles, I see them outside state constructed guardrails.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that, yes.
I personally feel that taking people's signs up and putting them in your trunk and driving to the DPW is asking for a whole lot of trouble.
Yeah, I, I, that's not, that's not something that.
Why? Because you're, you're taking somebody's sign that might be on its property.
No, yeah, I mean.
You know where the property line is.
No, I think in certain cases we do. I think what we should do is, is pick up the ones that we know are in the wrong places and I guarantee there's two dozen or more of them around town.
Oh, probably, probably more, more than that right now. I mean, you get them in the traffic islands, you get political signs, you get.
The political signs are allowed for sixty days before the election must come down, but in next day's.
Not on public land.
Not on public property, you're right on public property.
So.
You're right, you got a good point. I, I think if we did that, it would help people feel that we were doing it 'cause Route ninety-seven, as they say, you get one there and then a week later you've got ten.
Yeah, and I, we had a bunch of them out on Route one at fair time last year and I called a guy and I said, you've got twenty-four hours to get rid of them or I'm taking them. And they were, and they were expensive signs, so he wasn't gonna.
There was a phone number on the sign.
Oh, you call based on the phone number on the sign?
Yeah.
It was a warning, yeah, there always has to be identification on it because otherwise it's not worth putting a sign out there. If they don't have a contact information, it's not worth putting a sign out there.
But I mean, no, I would certainly be willing to sit in town hall and probably not the one, Diane might be on your behalf as your, your agent in this case. But called Pendry, called Brookwood, called Clark School, so I'm just gonna say, please have your people pick up the signs. I know the parents who are well-intentioned to go pop them out, but that lets them know you can't put those signs up in Topsfield and they may be more cautious in the future. And then just say, we're gonna pick them up next week if.
But wait, are those legal or not? Are those allowed or not?
If they're on public property, if many of them are on public property.
Oh, no, okay.
It's a school open house.
Okay, so the one that's out front of the DPW building, that's, I've been, it bugs me every time I drive by there and I'm always trying to go somewhere instead of pulling over and pulling it out of the.
Well, there's a week.
But if that were on somebody's property, someone's house, that's considered legal though, right? If, if someone has a curb sign.
The curb sign on.
Or you go to Pendry School.
The curb sign on Route one is on public property. If she moves it back on her personal property, then that's, that's that. I'm not gonna push that. It should be perhaps, then it falls under a different thing. You can't just go pick it up together and talk about it.
Well, I was wondering, is that legal or not?
No.
If it's not.
It depends on the size. It depends, it's gonna depend on the size and, you know, and it's something I would have to, I would have to look into at the time I had to complain on it, where it was, where it was and what size it was and.
I think we're getting off the track a little bit here. I mean, we're talking about individual signs on individual pieces of property. Christ, we could be here for three days talking about that. Christ, we could be here for three days talking about that.
You can use them as an example.
Yeah, we ought to be, we ought to be talking about our general approach. And you've already told us what you'd prefer and what you think we ought to be doing.
And I have, I do have a comment on the Cumberland Farms poll down there. The, I think, and this is, again, this is just an opinion, but I've talked to.
You rejected that.
I, yeah, I, yeah, only because the bylaw says that if you change a non-conforming sign, then it needs to be.
Comply.
It needs to, it needs to comply. It needs a special permit from the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
All right. The problem that you just, this is, this is me to you. If you're going to go down there and talk to them, I would be very cautious because the reason that did not get its special permit was because of the change. That's, that is regulating sign content? That's a no-no. I don't know what the rationale was for the Board of Selectmen not issuing that special permit for that sign. But that was nothing more than, than changing. That sign was a grandfathered sign. It was nothing more than changing the message on it. You can't regulate content. That's a, that's a, that's a First Amendment issue.
If they had a good one, I'd be in trouble.
You'd be screwed.
So the grandfathering wasn't voided by them taking another sign?
No, the frame, the frame stayed there.
Now, there was something there that says, even legally existing prior non-conforming signs, no sign may be removed or replaced by a new non-conforming sign without a special permit. So it is not automatic, they're not grandfathered.
Okay, that's, that's what it says in our bylaw. I think somebody should talk to K and P about that because I don't think, that got through, that got through the Attorney General's office. It doesn't mean it's legal. And I've talked to another, I talked to another person that is probably one of the few people that I have ever talked to that understands that. And he said, because they were gonna do it.
It's a challenge.
They were gonna do a lawsuit on her.
We can talk about it as you said, detail ones, but I think we want to come back to the.
I left the charge to not give the special permit on that one because of Section D Part 3, I'm sorry, 13.4D 3, which to me was very clear. Now, maybe this is not legal, even though it went through and I maybe have to go through KP, but according to what was written here, we were absolutely right in the judgment.
I agree with you. I, I agree with you. I'm just saying, Boyd is trying, my point was to Boyd, all right? That he's, he's trying to get that sign down. If they do it and he's successful and nobody files a lawsuit, nobody files a complaint, then it worked out good, you know?
Well, let's check with KP. That seems pretty straightforward to see whether this bylaw is in fact.
I just don't, I don't want to see anybody miss that.
I hope, before we go to our next agenda, I don't know, we'll talk about someone volunteering to review and see what questionable, what sections, if any, of this are questionable, you know?
I mean, that's one of the reasons, that's one of the reasons that it gets reviewed by the Attorney General's office. It should get reviewed for legalities, but it doesn't always.
But it's also interpretation because it does say, any change to a non-conforming sign. And so what represents a change to the sign? Oh, you're going to change the posts from being wood to granite or whatever. Is changing the message changing the sign? Well, someone would say, no, no, that's not changing the sign, that's changing the message. Someone else would say, oh, any change, that includes the message. And so it's an interpretation, but it's very clear from, if you go back to any of the legal stuff, that affecting the message is a problem with the First Amendment. We're not going to get there. There's lots of stuff that's written on that. We have all kinds of case studies on it. We essentially did go through something, though, which for some time had been a question about message, was how to do the open signs. Because if we go back and look at grandfathering, the single biggest grandfathering problem was open signs. There were a couple that were grandfathered to have a lighted open sign in the window.
Oh, I see. You mean OPE, you mean word.
Yeah, the red open with the hole, so you can find it.
Not necessarily, yeah, people could do, but the idea that, yeah. So that was a tough one because in the downtown area, there was some that, and so there were others that did it. And then it really then was a question, well, did you have it in 1970? What, we did the sign by, what was it, 80, 80 when we did the sign by law? That was a little difficult. So in some ways, we fixed, in my mind, a lot of the grandfathering. Now, clearly, if there's a business that has come in, that's a new business, and they say it's been grandfathered, no, it's a new business. That's a case where you have, you've changed a business, so it's a new sign in a sense. You don't, you don't get grandfathered as a new business. You get grandfathered as that business with that sign. So I think that grandfathering is a problem, but not a big one anymore. Especially, again, because of the open signs being resolved.
Okay, so let me try and get a little bit of a handle on that process. Not necessarily in coherent order, but will you be able to draft the letter that Glenn's suggesting? Give us a draft?
May I make a suggestion on the draft?
Yep, yep.
Just to make it clear to people, I'm wondering whether, and I'm looking for advice on this, in the body of the letter, it would say sort of, for example, sandwich signs and then list the part to look at. Pop-up sign, I don't know how you do it, but basically, show them exactly where it is. Because I know at least one person I spoke with casually, I don't know who it was unfortunately, who said, oh, I don't have a sign, it's just one of those things in the edge. So they don't look at the pop-up signs as signs. They think of them as the ones that are mounted in front of a bank or a building. So we need to be really clear that, you know, the wire-mounted plastic signs.
Removable, they're removable.
Sign definition, which is pretty clear. All right, so that could be, that could be included in there rather than, rather than try to go out with every different type of sign.
There you go, there you go, I'm okay with that.
What I was thinking was the fact that at the last town meeting, we actually had a bylaw amendment to the bylaw is reason enough for us to want to show all of the businesses on this list. There's been an update to the bylaw. We want to let you know what the bylaw is and here's a copy of it and here's how you can follow up if you have any questions. And if you need a special permit, please let us know, Board of Selectmen and our phone number. So the fact that we can maybe get this out, we could make it seem as though, I mean, that's part of it, is we want to educate people before we start ticketing them, is the idea. Is let them know what the, that there is a bylaw, what it says so that most of the people don't even know that there is one because they'll say, well, went online, I couldn't even find it. Some of these things are, I mean, we'll just, we can mail it to them and we can do a letter from the Board of Selectmen that makes it seem as though we're trying to educate folks and update them, what the law is, what the rules are, and if they have questions, who they can call.
I think that's the kind of gentler way to approach it in the beginning. And then if that, if that doesn't work, then we take it to the next step and I, and I issue a letter that, you know, a violation letter, a violation notice.
Can I ask also that prior to us getting anything close to the point, when we do a violation?
We'll just scratch it.
That we get a really clear definition on what's grandfathered and what's not? Because if people come, the issue of grandfathering is going to be, you said it's easy, Dick. I don't think it is from my perspective and I think we may need a legal definition.
I didn't mean that there wouldn't be some that are a question as to whether they were there on that date or not. There may be some, but I don't think it's a big part of it because there's been enough turnover in business. And again, we fixed this one that was really the biggest single problem of mine, was this open sign. So I'm not saying that they're all resolved, but I, I don't think there's many issues with a grandfathered sign or not grandfathered.
I don't either.
Because, because it changes over in business and things like that.
Well, see, I'm concerned, the whole question to me is not clear. Maybe it is to both of you.
But we're not going to get.
What is, is the sign grandfathered, is the business grandfathered? Every time you see an LED sign out there, you know it's less than 10 years old. It's probably less than five years old. It didn't have LEDs. So that sign is not over the five years old. Period. If it replaced a former non-illuminated open sign or one that had a bulb in front of it or something other back of it, is that still a lit sign? And then, Grant, those are the questions that are not clear to me. I truly hate those open signs downtown, but I realize they're part of the law now.
Yeah, and if they're, and if they're part of the law, I think it's just, it's just, you know, taking the dead horse to, to try to do anything about them, whether, whether there was a square sign there that had a light bulb in front of it or not. I don't think that that.
No, I.
I think that the, the issue with any, I don't see the issue downtown being grandfathered signs. I see the issue downtown being all of the little pop-up signs that you mentioned. All right? And, you know, and the, you know, even, even things like the massage sign up 461 where we were out there, you know, that type of thing.
You mean when it said, "Town offices?"
Massage. The next one said, "Pay taxes here." Well, massage your first.
Wait for a while.
Well, massage your wallet.
Massage your wallet.
We could spend days here talking about details, okay? And, and we've got enough that we can shoot at right now that are perfectly legitimate.
Could I just understand then how, how you would deal with something that is clearly on private property?
I have to say.
I have to do it as an example. It's in the Village Shopping Center property. And it has a particular business. Whether the business is in there or not in there, I, I don't know. But it's on the Village Shopping Center property and it's for a business. How do you enforce that? Do you tell that phone number, get it off? Or do you tell the property owner, get it off? I'm just trying to understand.
I could do, I could do either. The one that put the sign up.
You can do either?
Yeah, the business, the business owner is typically the one that puts the sign up. They're the ones that order them, they have them installed and stuff. That, that is, nobody else down there that, that does that. The, you know, Peter Flomp is not, they.
Peter Flomp doesn't have a clue what's on their.
Right, they're not going to get, they're not going to get involved in that. And that's, and that's pretty much true with any place.
Okay.
So that's, that violation notice would be sent to the owner of the sign, which is the business.
Thank you, okay. I did, that's what I was trying to understand. It could be either one, but you can, the point is it can be either one.
If that didn't work, if that didn't work, because Peter owns the property, I can then send Peter a notice of violation.
Okay.
All right? And, and that will get him to give his tenant a kick in the pants. So hopefully.
Okay, now, just to confirm what I think we've already said. You feel you have enough compliance authority to cause people to comply with? You, you don't need additional powers to, to do the sign bylaw, correct? You can do fines, citations, whatever, okay?
We can, yeah, and we can, we can be as gentle or as nasty as we want to be. All right? And I, and I think that we start out, we start out with gentle and we progress from there. Because otherwise, and we, and we have to keep, once we start it, we get the ones that kick back, we just have to, we have to just continue with it. We have to, if we have to get nasty with a couple of them, we have to get aggressive. Then we get aggressive, you know, about the enforcement of it. They're the ones that will force that, not, not me. But I don't want to get partway through this process and then because things get heated and the selectmen get phone calls and get complaints that they got a letter of violation and they got a fine. I, I want you, you guys need to back me.
Are you guys saying, are you saying you don't want us to bail out on you?
Right, I'm saying, I'm saying, I want you to, I want you to back me. Because otherwise it's not worth doing.
I understand.
We say when you're at the Daybreak Cafe on a Saturday morning and the owner says, how come you took my sign?
Right.
You say, it's in the bylaw.
Yeah, go to the garage and pick it up.
It's at the DPW.
Another thing that might be helpful, and this is for PR as well as for signs that, I'm thinking of the curved sign as one example. And there are a few others, fellow selling mailboxes and posts along Route 97 and so on. I'm thinking that it might be good for someone somehow, and I'm willing to do it if that makes sense, to basically write a letter to the tri-town transcript saying, you know, we are concerned about this. There have been a lot of complaints and so on. And we'd like, you know, if you have a sign on your property and so on, please know that there are sign regulations, here's how you can find them and that we look forward to improving the compliance in town, recognizing that many people have not been aware, but dun-dun-dun, we're starting, we're starting to pay attention to this and want to help people come into conformance, period.
How much residential property signage is an issue? I'm trying to understand it.
There's not a lot, there's not a lot. Just the mailbox one.
I think we want to be careful about telling people, you got to be careful about what you have there. Maybe as time goes by, but to start with a newspaper with, you know, what sign do you have out in front of your house?
I think that.
I think might be.
But I, I, I think maybe a combination of the two, to be truthful with you. I think maybe something in the paper that just says that, very similar to the letter that we're going to send to the businesses, that the, that the Board of Selectmen in conjunction with the town administrator and the building inspector are, you know, trying to, however you want to word it, but trying to, in essence, trying to clean up the signage.
Return the.
And, you know, and that type of thing, I think is, I think is probably a good PR thing because it's just going to let the people know that, that everybody is paying attention to their concerns. It's, it's, because it's not, it's not two or three people in town that are concerned about it, and I get that.
So push it to PR side, not the compliance side.
I'll bet you a dollar, if we clean up the Main Street and South Main Street, the problem is going to go away.
And, like, who said that the, the PR part of it versus the enforcement part of it?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I support that. I think that's a good idea. That's part of the gentle approach to begin.
All you have to do is write a letter to the editor saying the following was mailed to residents or business owners and give them the actual letter.
Yeah.
Nope, nope, nope.
I think that will help. And also a pointer for those citizens who like to look to exactly where this is. Put down the URL in the newspaper, kind of a thing. Because people will go to Wicked Local and.
Kelly, do we give us this excerpt, the part of the zone, the enforcement section of the zoning bylaw? Is that good with this?
I think you can summarize it too to some extent.
Yeah, but I'd like to have it.
Yes, I'd like, yeah.
One of my questions was how do we do that? I didn't, I don't know what that.
So the way the by, the way the bylaw is, is written is that I, yeah, I get the notice of violation or I see a violation, I cite them. I have to give them 30 days to fix it because then I have to go, I have to turn it over to the selectmen to decide whether they want to enforce it or not. Which I, I'm not a big fan of that provision. I think that it should be, if there's a violation, I don't think I should have to come to the Board of Selectmen for permission to proceed with it.
Yeah, you're, once it's done, it's done.
Obviously, right, because then if this Board of Selectmen overrules the thing and says, no, no, we're not going to do anything, then why did I spend all my time? When it just, it just diminishes my authority with everybody. So I'm not a big, I'm not a big fan of that particular provision. And I would obviously never, ever go to K and P without talking to Kelly first or, you know, in her absence, somebody that has the authority to say, yeah, we need to bring that to K and P. Because you spend, you spend a lot of money really quickly, you can spend a lot of money really quickly with foolishness. All right? And, and, and nobody wants to do that.
Wouldn't it work better if you had authority without them to come to us? But there was, you know, if you want to, if you're a citizen and you want to appeal, come to the Board of Selectmen, but it's their problem to appeal rather than your problem to come to get enforcement?
Yeah, and see, they, they don't appeal to the Board of Selectmen, all right?
Who do they appeal to?
The zoning board of appeals.
Okay, zoning board appeals. Okay, I'm okay with that. Yeah. I'm okay with that.
I don't know about that. I don't, I don't think that's true. It's the Board of, it's the Board of Selectmen.
Well, he'll get the phone calls, but.
Well, should we are elected. ZBAs.
He already, he already, he already told us if I'm going to do that, I don't want you guys to bail out on me.
So I, I think that it might be, the ZBA, the ZBA, the appeals may go to, I don't know if it's in here.
Probably the more significant signs, like if, if countryside.
But the, but the, the sign, the zone by law.
No, it's not in that, then it goes to the enforcement appeals.
I'd act as the.
Probably two different.
Yes, two different things.
Well, it could be. Let me pretend I'm a chair this way. Was that Gal that you had?
Yes.
Let's just take a deep breath for a minute. So we have, so one or two of you is going to please get us that. And even if you rescind the sign regulations, then we have the whole package. We have a chance to know all the time. I got totally confused on what between the two letter things. So are we still doing the, the first letter that, because you're, you're going to draft that?
Yes.
The soft letter.
Does not.
What was the, the second action? Are we, is that what we're doing?
What we'll do and for, and to build off of that, once we mail out the letters, then we could send a letter to the editor and get the tri-town to sort of help publicize the fact that this information is going out. And we're trying to make it an initiative to educate people about the, the sign bylaws.
And, and something on the website too, I think would be good.
Oh, yeah. We already have it there, but we can add the link that you referred to. We can add a link in both of those pieces.
Right. And without pointing to individuals, because many people, myself included, have had political signs in their front yard. I think if we sort of say all kinds of signs, including for sales, for, are addressed in the sign regulations, here's how you go look. Each individual can then make a, you know, if they have something, they're wondering if it's legal, they can go and go, how long am I going to keep a political sign out? If the pointer's there and the fact it applies to everything, and that's in the letter, and then that's kind of the agenda here, so you can find it.
And they can, I mean, they can call, they can call the office. Not that I want to get inundated with fifty phone calls about is my sign legal? Because it's going to be, the, the response to that is going to be, well, what size is the sign? Oh, I don't know. How many square feet is it? Oh, I don't know. How long has it been there? I don't, I don't know, maybe a couple of years. You know what I mean? And it's like.
But once we go through a cycle of that, and I just think you're right, and we want to support you on that, and you have a board that's going to be here for the rest of the year that will support you, I'd like to do what we can to kind of make this whole thing to kind of easier for everybody to manage. And because you've got a level of support and we know the town wants that.
Right, and, and I think, and I think that with the letter being, you know, written as that way, that, you know, in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen and, you know, da-da-da-da-da.
Yeah.
That, you know, it's going to let people know that everybody's on board with it.
Yeah, I think that's right.
And this is a, you know, a, a town effort, a true town effort, not just the building inspector.
Yeah, no, I think that's good. No, I think that's good. The other thing frankly, and this is the PR piece, so many people talk to us about this in various ways. It makes clear we're trying to do something. If we are.
Okay, so every time I brought this up, I get absolutely no positive response, but I'm going to do it one more time.
No.
So we've been sitting in this meeting and already we've identified three parts, at least just identified a third, that are in the current bylaw that are worth revisiting, possibly either changing or working from, and possibly going to K and P. I just don't want to, give me a second. I don't want to do it piecemeal. So my question is, does that not make sense? I, I, I'm kind of flabbergasted that we're going to start doing stuff without taking, that's too strong. I'm taking it back. Is that bad?
That's after a gentle one.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's the planning board that generally does this kind of stuff, but we're grappling with this. Why wouldn't we review it first, just highlight sections that need further discussion and.
Well, I've read this thing a half a dozen times in the last two weeks. And I suspect all of us haven't, okay? And I think after this kind of conversation, if we go back and read this again and we'll see some things in there that you may have not have thought much about it. For example, that item number two, the special permit granting authority shall adopt rules and reg, and that's us.
Yeah.
Shall adopt rules and regulations, including, but not limited to, fees, procedures, method.
Which brings a very important question, which is whether.
It's a sign by law or a job.
Whether, whether that section we keep alluding to in the general enforcement procedures, it applies.
That's it.
That's unclear to me. This says that.
That's a key question.
There's a worst votes to set the fees.
And we haven't done that. That means the other one just kicks in. I don't know about that.
And even, and even specifically mentions appeals and that.
Yeah.
Remove of delinquent signs and shall make them available to the town board's office. This is what I'm going to ask.
The fees, procedures, we have, and we have regulations. If you do assign special permit, there is a fee for that. We, we do these things. Yes.
Yeah, but I'm. This is specific to this.
No, that's, that's not a fee. A violation is a, it's a citation. It's a different thing. But just to clarify, fees for, fees relate to.
Yeah.
Doing applications, right. Yes.
Different than apply.
Then they apply it to, right? And then when they do a special permit.
Procedure that comes from the bylaw.
All I'm suggesting is let's go back and read this thing now after this.
So what, everybody did. What are the three sections that, what are the, the three items that were a couple of?
That was one of them, was Dick was pointing out that we were the special permitting authority, not the, not the ZBA.
Right, I know that that.
Two others that we referenced at some point during the.
It was about the nonconforming to nonconforming and the issue of free speech.
Well, free speech is in there.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
That's a, that's a general.
The one that you told us that while the Attorney General said it was okay, but not been legal.
Oh, the idea of any change to a nonconforming sign.
That's on page two, section D, number three.
Well.
Just reword, rewording a nonconforming sign does not.
I don't think that there's anything necessarily wrong with it. It has to do with the interpretation, which means that it may not be wrong, but it should be clearer if.
It's worth.
It's worth looking at.
That's all there is.
It's um, thirteen point four, section D three. And, you know, part of the question I have is if free speech trumps everything, then I can go out and put a sign up of any kind I want outside of my front yard because my right to free speech trumps town law. I don't think that's intended or the case.
Yeah, that's not what it says though. John, it's not what it says, what it says. What it says is the message on a sign.
Yep.
Once you have a permission, the sign, a sign is not a constitutional right.
Right.
The message is a constitutional right. So once you have the sign, the message you put up is within the constitution.
Yes.
So we can, we can. A few minutes ago, we had someone, a few years ago, we had someone at the post office with signs that some folks felt were extremely.
Yeah, well, now, that's a different story. Now, wait, wait, the Supreme Court has, violent overthrow of the government is the example that I remember from high school, from grade school, as to the reason to override free speech. And the, the Supreme Court has spoken on that. But yes, that, that's, that's an obvious one. But other than that, the, the sign message is what you own. You don't own the authority to a sign. You own the authority to a message.
So, so, so let me jump in for a minute. So the way, I, I was going to ask whether there was a volunteer. It seems like what we want to do is for each selectman independently to go through this.
Oh, I, I can volunteer to do whatever I want in every regard.
You volunteered to do whatever I want? This is a whole law. You put in the minutes, please.
Take that ten for the record, please.
But, but we can't, we're not allowed to, to do comments that's under void because that's a violation of.
Why don't we just all review it so we can have another follow-up discussion and talk about.
That's what I'm saying. So then we have to.
Can I make a suggestion? We do this all the time at, at Masco. People review, they send to the, in our case, our board secretary.
And then I just compile all of them.
But if you compile ours and then put them out, the nice thing is we see the overlaps and everything. It organizes the conversation much better and allows us to get everything in. We get everything back, but we get it in an organized form, rather than then you go, then you go, then you go, that kind of a thing.
And there's no issues.
Because of that one case that haunts me day and night, can we just, let's not, let's do them to Kelly.
That's what I'm saying, to Kelly. Yes, Kelly in this case.
Yeah.
Can you do me a favor and to just, the next thing to do is send out a little email to the, to all the board of the BOS that says, a reminder from last meeting, please review the sign regulation bylaw and.
Enforcement.
And if related enforcement proceedings, which we'll have by then.
Yeah.
And send comments to Kelly on sections that need further discussion, something like that.
Including the regulations, that the Board of Selectmen's regulations on signs should be in there too.
Where's that?
Well, that's thirteen point two.
Thirteen point three, right here, special permit granting authority.
Thirteen point three, section K two.
It's right here.
But there's another section that.
Is there another section elsewhere?
Well, it's probably our sign or special permit request and.